Welcome to Balfont Borough Council Business Meeting. Would you please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I would like to be a citizen of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under our power in the physical and liberty and justice of the world.
Council met from seven o'clock until the start of this meeting for an executive session for personnel reasons. Ms. Clayton, could you do the roll call, please?
Okay, Mr. Bernier is excused, Mr. Brackville.
Here.
Ms. Clayton, here.
Ms. Dan.
Here.
Mr. Johnson.
Here.
Ms. McKean.
Here.
Ms. Purnell.
Here.
Ms. Sedgwick.
Here.
Ms. Toasty Basie.
I'm here.
Is Ms. McLeigh excused?
No, sorry. I'm sorry.
Ms. McLeigh, here.
Here.
And Mayor Johnson is excused.
Thank you. Additions to the council meeting agenda in accordance with Act 65 of 2021, if a matter is not on the agenda, council cannot take official action on it with some exceptions. The council can act on matters relating to potential or real emergencies. Council may add a matter of agency business to its agenda through a majority vote. The council should state the reason why the action item is being added to the agenda. Does anyone have any additions to the agenda tonight? Public comment. Borough council intends to take public comment related to the motion that is on the floor after it has been duly made and seconded. The order of comments will be public comments and then council comment, including proposed amendments by council members. If amendments are proposed to the original motion, the public will then only comment on the amendments before final votes are taken. You must be a Balfont resident, nonprofit representative, a business owner, or an official representative of another governmental agency. Speakers shall identify themselves by name and street municipality if outside the borough of Balfont. Comments are limited to three minutes. Under Communications tonight, the first one, the borough will be loading compost into vehicles on Saturday, August 23rd, September 20th, and October 18th from 8:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. at the Musser Lane Compost Facility. The cost is $15 per cubic yard, which must be paid in advance at the Balfont Borough Administrative Office located at 301 North Spring Street, Suite 200 in Balfont. The office is open Monday through Friday, 8:00 a.m. to 4:30 p.m. There is no council action needed on this. I believe that is on the website, though, Mr. Holderman.
Yes, it is.
And they can just call for more information or stop in?
Correct.
The Balfont Police Department National Night Out will be held on Tuesday, August 3rd from 5:00 to 8:00 p.m. on the waterfront. I'm sorry. That's because I can't see. It will be held Tuesday, August 5th. Thank you, Joanne, from 5:00 to 8:00 p.m. on the waterfront. Thank you for doing that, Chief. We're very excited about that. It's always a nice, nice event. The 2025 PSAB Fall Leadership Conference will be held at the Penn Stater, October 3rd to 5th, 2025. If you would like to be registered for the conference, please contact Alyssa Doherty at the Balfont Borough Office. The stage at Tally Ram Park requests for determination letter from Keller Engineering Project Manager, Michael Pratt. That was in your packet tonight. Thank you. We also received thank you letters addressed to Officer Luce. Both very nice. He went above and beyond with that. Balfont Waterfront Multimodal Grant Submission. There is nothing we need on that. And the last one under Communications, a request for use of county property for the 2025 Balfont Victorian Christmas. That was also in your packet. Under Consent Agenda, all items listed on the consent agenda are considered routine and will be acted upon by a single motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless members of the council request specific items to be removed for separate action. Can I have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda, please?
Show move, Brackville.
Thank you, Randy.
Second, Clayton.
Thank you, Debbie.
I'd like to remove the first item.
Anyone else? So we can have a friendly agreement to go on with the rest of this and then we'll talk about that. Would that be all right? Great. Could we have a roll call vote on this then, please?
Mr. Brackville.
Yes.
Ms. Clayton, yes. Ms. Dan.
Yes.
Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
Ms. McKean.
Yes.
Ms. Purnell.
Yes.
Ms. Sedgwick.
Yes.
Ms. Toasty Basie.
Yes.
Thank you.
Discussion, please.
Okay. I would like to table the budget versus actual for June 2025. When you look at it, the only thing present is the revenue side. There is no expenses at all. I contacted Lori. She said that was an error and she wants to bring it back at the September meeting. So we would like to table. And just as a quick note, on the budget versus actual summary, there was a note stating that the actual numbers for 2024 are not available, but they were all listed there. She said that was an error, but I figured that we didn't need to do anything with that. She's just scratching that note.
Right. Thank you very much. So we'll need to do a vote to table this.
So I made a motion, you need a second.
Okay, we need a second, please.
I'll second that, Johnson.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Could we have a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Brackville.
Yes.
Ms. Clayton, yes. Ms. Dan.
Yes.
Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
Ms. McKean.
Yes.
Ms. Purnell.
Yes.
Ms. Sedgwick.
Yes.
And Ms. Toasty Basie.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, under Reports, our mayor is excused tonight. We also have a report from Ms. Brooks, who is our manager of grants and special projects. Did anybody have questions or comments for Julie? Or Julie, did you want to add anything? Okay, we also had a report from Gina Thompson, mostly just listing meetings that are coming up for her. She did call and ask if she should be here, but really didn't think that we would have anything. If anybody has questions that we need to, I can take them back to her, or I'm sure Dawn knows quite a bit, too. Okay, under Current and Old Business, council action to select a police officer candidate from Balfont's eligibility list. The Civil Service Commission and Chief Whitmer are recommending the selection of Gage Baumgartner. Could I have a motion and a second to select Gage Baumgartner from the eligibility list and to make a formal offer to hire?
Show move, Brackville.
Second, Toasty Basie.
Thank you. Any comments? Could we have a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Brackville.
Yes.
Ms. Clayton, yes. Ms. Dan.
Yes.
Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
Ms. McKean.
Yes.
Ms. Purnell.
Yes.
Ms. Sedgwick.
Yes.
Ms. Toasty Basie.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, the Potter Street Railroad Spur. I assume this was you that met with the staff. Met with Cetacog and Pantera at the spur to discuss the subdivision on Tuesday, July 29th. No council action is needed. Was there anything you wanted to add, Mr. Holderman?
No, I would assume that probably it'll take Pantera, I'm going to say, a month or month and a half or so to do the survey and subdivision. So soon as we get some, you know, get to that point, they'll come in and talk to council.
Thank you very much. The Locust Lane Stormwater Project will begin early August 2025. No council action is needed?
I just.
Any discussion?
Yeah, just real quickly for the public's purpose. This is to fix the problem under a homeowner's garage on Locust Lane.
Thank you, Joanne. Laurel Asphalt will begin working on the stamped crosswalks in August of '25. Intersections that will be affected are Bishop Street and Spring Street and High Street and Spring Street.
I should have mentioned that that should be this week is when they're going to start working on it, is what we were told, so it could be any day this week.
Curiosity question. I know eventually we want to do the others in the commercial district. Do you have any timeline for that?
No, we don't, but I think if I'm not mistaken, Julie, did we put, are we talking about using CDBG for the crosswalks on water and high? So that would probably be the next, the next step, Joanne, and I would, that will be, I would think four crosswalks would be one year of CDBG funds, so that could be within the next year and a half.
Okay, under New Business, there'll be a bid opening for Parkview and Zion Road Traffic Signal Project. Could I have a motion and a second to allow the engineer to review, approve, select, and notify the lowest responsible bid?
I'll make that motion, Johnson.
Second, Clayton.
Thank you. After we vote or before?
Well, we can do it before.
Okay.
All right. The first bid is from Man B Services LLC, they're out of Clarion, PA. Give me a second, I'm going to find out where they. All right, the bid is $298,452.38. Next bid is Kaharchik Construction, Exeter, PA. Their bid is $342,556. And the final bid is Bruce Merrilies Electric Company out of Newcastle.
342-556. Oh, I'm sorry. I thought you wanted to.
So right now you have the motion and a second.
Yes.
To have our engineer will review the three bids and they will make the award to the lowest because we don't want to hold this up, so.
Great, thank you very much. Could we have a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Brackville.
Yes.
Ms. Clayton, yes. Ms. Dan.
Yes.
Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
Ms. McKean.
Yes.
Ms. Purnell.
Yes.
Ms. Sedgwick.
Yes.
Ms. Toasty Basie.
Yes.
Thank you.
We have Resolution Number 08042025-01 authorizing the sale and disposal of unnecessary personal property with a value of less than $2,000. Could I have a motion and a second to approve this resolution?
Show move.
Thank you, Joanne.
A second, Sedgwick.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? Could we have a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Brackville.
Yes.
Ms. Clayton, yes. Ms. Dan.
Yes.
Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
Ms. McKean.
Yes.
Ms. Purnell.
Yes.
Ms. Sedgwick.
Yes.
Ms. Toasty Basie.
Yes.
Thank you.
I did?
Oh, that's the next, that's the next one.
Thank you, but thank you, I have been known to do that. Junior Council Member attendance at the Fall PSAB Conference. Could we have a motion and a second to approve payment of $190 per attendee for the junior council member or members to attend the Fall PSAB Conference, to be paid by the borough? It is in State College this year.
Show move, Brackville.
Second, Clayton.
Thank you, Debbie. Is there any discussion?
I'd just like to say this would be a great opportunity. If Ms. McLeigh is interested in attending, it will be here in Center County, so it's close by. It's very, always very interesting and get to meet a lot of great people and learn a lot. So if you're interested, we'd like to make that opportunity available to you.
I am interested and I want to thank you guys a lot for the opportunities that you provide me and I'm excited, so thank you.
Great, thank you very much. Roll call. Oh, I'm sorry, yes. Randy has me thrown now.
Mr. Brackville.
Yes.
Ms. Clayton, yes. Ms. Dan.
Yes.
Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
Ms. McKean.
Yes.
Ms. Purnell.
Yes.
Ms. Sedgwick.
Yes.
Ms. Toasty Basie.
Yes.
Thank you.
Victorian Balfont Main Street Planning Grant Application, request for letter of support. Can we have a motion and a second to provide the letter of support for this grant application, please?
Show move, Brackville.
Second, Johnson.
Thank you. Discussion? I mean, could I invite you to come up and just talk for a few minutes about the grant? We did see it. I know it's not released to the public yet pending a couple of things that you need to do yet.
So if I could just, yeah, it would be great to give you some background, so.
Could you make sure that you're, press the button to make sure the green light's on, sort of the C net that they can hear you.
The green light is on.
Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Okay, so I'm the community manager for Downtown Balfont Incorporated. Our president, Steve Barley, couldn't be here. About five months ago, a number of the 401(c)(3), excuse me, 501(c)(3)'s and c)(6)'s in Balfont began talking about how to better work together and how to have some efficiencies. So this would include the Chamber of Commerce, excuse me, Balfont Inter Valley Chamber of Commerce, Downtown Balfont Incorporated, the Balfont Cultural and Historical Association, and Historic Balfont Incorporated. And all of those groups indicated interest in having ways to work better together. The Chamber and Downtown Balfont were most interested in finding some way to combine our efforts. We all need more efficient ways to cover phones, to have budget work supported, but we don't all need individual staff. And then moving forward, we'd like to support Balfont in strategic planning. So at the beginning of July, Department of Commerce and Economic Development put out their annual Main Street Call for Applications, short timeline, it's due August 31st, hence the reason that the Chamber and DBI haven't worked out every detail. But what I put in your packets or provided to President Dan is the letter of support that would support the concept of a one-year planning grant. Now, DCED puts, will make much larger awards that will support things like facade upgrades downtown, perhaps the bike path to Axeman Hollow, these larger projects. But we feel that we are at the point where a one-year planning grant that will help us get services consolidated for these 501's and then start some planning in concert with the borough, and because so much of this depends on the borough, I thought it was important that you know about it.
Great, thank you. Anybody have questions?
Once you finalize the grant, because I know that what you gave us was draft, it wasn't final, could you send that back to the borough so we can put it in our next packet so that the public, as well as we, can see what you're actually submitting?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. Anything else? Thank you, thanks for being here tonight.
Thank you.
I know, I actually remembered, I'm slow. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Brackville.
Yes.
Ms. Clayton, yes. Ms. Dan.
Yes.
Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
Ms. McKean.
Yes.
Ms. Purnell.
Yes.
Ms. Sedgwick.
Yes.
Ms. Toasty Basie.
Yes.
Thank you.
Balfont Waterfront Associates, can I have a motion and a second to pursue an agreement with Balfont Waterfront Associates with the borough that addressed the construction and maintenance of Dunlop Street along with easement?
Second, Johnson.
Thank you. Discussion?
This is another move forward to help get our construction started for the new hotel, so thankful for Borough Council to help Mr. Songer out with this.
Yes, thank you, Doug. Anything else? Can we have a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Brackville.
Yes.
Ms. Clayton, yes. Ms. Dan.
Yes.
Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
Ms. McKean.
Yes.
Ms. Purnell.
Yes.
Ms. Sedgwick.
Yes.
Ms. Toasty Basie.
Yes.
Thank you.
Under New Business, we also have the Spring Creek watershed meeting minutes from July 16th, 2025. No council action is needed. Does anybody have any questions or comments on that?
I don't.
Nothing?
It should be in the packet.
Yes, they are in the packet. Thank you, Randy.
I have one other issue before we leave because the appointment that we made today with the police department should have been in the packet from the Civil Service Committee. And I brought them down Friday morning early and got them to Alyssa and to Bill, but they're not in, they didn't make it into the packet. So I just want to add. So I just want to ask from the Civil Service Committee that the Balfont Borough Council support what we do, is select and support Bill's person that he wants to bring on. So Balfont Borough needs to approve that.
I believe we did.
There was a letter, there was a one-page.
One-page, was it more than a one-page letter?
Yeah, but it still needs approved. It wasn't in, it wasn't in here. Yeah.
Yeah, I think we.
It wasn't in the packet.
We approved both of them together.
Yes, it is. Civil Service Commission and Chief Whitmer are recommending the selection.
Well, that works. That work, Bill? Okay.
That works okay?
Shoot me.
Because we had both letters in here for that. Is that all right, Randy? You're all right with that? Great. Is there anything else? Okay, council comments for the good of the order. Rita?
I have nothing tonight, thank you.
Just another thank you, guys. That's it.
Great, we're glad you're here. Thanks very much. Joanne?
First of all, I think the Arts and Crafts Fair went really, really well. It looked well attended. It did look a little bit smaller in terms of the number of vendors this year than last year, but other than that, I think it went quite well. While I was there, Tom Wilson and I talked to Joanne and Roger Pollak on Friday afternoon. He's an artist who does clay, bronze, and steel sculptures. He, in 1995, he created five commemorative medallions honoring the borough's bicentennial. He's now trying to find out what actually happened to them. He thinks one of them was given to the police department, one was given to the borough, a third one he thinks was given to one of the historic museums or libraries in town. He does not know what happened to the other two. He has asked for the public or people who could look if they know, to let him know. It, they are about 10 inches in diameter, four of them are bronze, one is stainless steel. And if you have any knowledge of these, let Tom Wilson or myself know, and we'll get in touch with him because we told him we would seek them out for him.
Great, thank you, Joanne. Randy?
I have nothing for tonight, thanks.
Yes, for those of you who get your tax bills in the mail, this piece of junk mail that says official real estate tax bill on the front, and it does look like junk mail, have been sent out. I got mine today, but keep an eye out because it's very easy to mix it up with other things. And I would like to thank Don Holderman for sticking with us to the bitter end. And thank you very much for everything you've done for us.
Appreciate it.
You stole my idea. Yes, I also wanted to thank you very much for stepping up and helping us so much. This will be Don's last meeting, as he'll be leaving us the end of August, and it's really been nice having you back for a while.
It's been great being back, and I thank you and wish everyone the best. So it's been fun.
I have nothing tonight.
Nothing for me, thank you. I'd just like, I'd just like to point out that August, excuse me, is National Women's Equality Day, or I'm sorry, month, and this represents the women's right to vote, the 19th Amendment, and women's rights and equality. So it's something great to celebrate.
Thank you, Shauna. Please. Absolutely.
First of all, I'd like to thank you for your vote tonight to bring on a new officer. Next meeting, I'll have him here. We'll do a ceremony. You'll get to meet him and see what type of person that's going to be serving the Balfont Community. With that being said, I'd also like to recognize the Civil Service. Randy, Randy does a lot of work for this on his own time. He's actually sat in on our interviews as well. He's probably getting sick of my calls and emails about everything that we have to get signed, but again, I appreciate that, and all the other members as well. Secondly, I also thank you for the resolution that was passed tonight. Again, if we're not going to use the equipment, we might as well sell it and get what we need. And thirdly, I'd like to thank Tom Songer for allowing us to use the waterfront, his property over here, for tomorrow night. I hope to see you all there tomorrow night, come over to National Night Out. It should be a good night. We're going to have food there. It's free, a petting zoo, face paint games. So if you know any children, bring them out, come out and meet us, talk with us. We do plan on having the helicopter there. It's supposed to land around 5:30. The only way it won't be there is if they're busy, so we're hoping there's no emergencies tomorrow during our event. So I hope to see you all there. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Can I have a motion and a second to adjourn the meeting, please?
Second.
On favor, say aye. Opposed? Meeting adjourned.